And welcome to the January 27th meeting of the Select Board. You would please stand and join us for the plaid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to everyone, if you please make sure your cell phones are on vibrate, silence, off. Thank you. So we have no public hearings tonight. Appointments, we have the deliberative session preparation, which Connor is going to run through, and Rick, or I'm sorry, Ron, and Kim Kearns as well.
So I'll get started. Select Board members, you all have in your packet the proposed deliberative session schedule. I worked with the town clerk and the moderator to put this together. Basically, you know that the order is, we're going to talk about the warrant articles. We're going to discuss them, introduce any questions or amendments, and then move on. The thing, the main thing that's different is the plan this year is to have the presentation for an article ahead of that article that's to be discussed. And so the tradition of making a motion and seconding to introduce the article is just a holdover from prior to SB 2 town meeting. It's not necessary, it doesn't need to happen, but it involved the Select Board previously. So the plan this year is I'll prepare a very brief presentation, a very brief introduction, for Select Board members to make, the introduction for Select Board members to make prior to the discussion of the warrant articles. I honestly just went in order for the warrant articles and anyone that a Select Board member individually brought up to the board, I had them introduce it. So certainly, Select Board members could suggest changes. Most of them are the capital reserve contributions, and the notes will simply say, you know, this is how much is in the account now, this is how much we're asking for, this is the plan to use that money. The library will be presented by folks from the library community. I'll still present the operating budget and make a brief presentation on how we got to the operating budget we did. So like I said, a lot of it's the same, but that's what's different. And the moderator, Mr. St. Jean, and the town clerk, Kim Karikas, are here to speak to it also. If you have questions or thoughts for deliberative session.
Tracy?
Is it at all possible? Okay, so is it at all possible for you, when you're presenting the budget, to include a quick breakdown of when the bond for the middle school is paid off and what the final balance is on that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
I ran, I'm a simple person, the simple math. That bond is long gone. You just take 24 million, do 2% for the payment and stuff, there's gonna be no savings over the years of the cost of living and everything, and the budget going up. I don't see any savings, unless you can prove me wrong with numbers, but I don't see it happening.
So my interest was not in whether there's ever going to be a savings with the school budget, because we're probably going to continue to be a growth community. My interest was in illustrating that the bond will be finalized. So I don't disagree with you that we'll continue to experience growth, we'll continue to be a school choice community, and we'll continue to have families with school age children moving into our community. But I think it is important to present, when the budget is presented, that in fact, we finally have reached the end of paying off that bond.
It'd be good information for the voters.
Right, and so the board will remember, we've discussed it before. The last payment is in November, October, November of 2022. 2022. And the important note, and maybe this is what Select Person Air was pointing to, the last payment is, there's two payments a year. The last budget year for the school only has one payment. So the impact of the bond repayments will be, you know, reduced by half the first year of the fiscal year 2021. Then fiscal year 2022 will have the second half be the last payment. So the the impact to taxpayers will be spread out over two years opposed to one. And, you know, I think the, what Select Person Air may have been saying is that the impact on the school budget each year typically is more than the bond repayment.
I would agree with that.
Well, I mean, those are numbers, that's, yeah.
Thank you, okay.
Any other questions or comments on the proposed deliberative session? Would Mr. St. Jean or Ms. Kearns have anything they would like to add?
Karikas? No, I'm all set. I just want to make sure that it's, when anybody speaks, make sure we...
Sorry about that.
I let go, but I wanted to speak to them.
I apologize, my brain is not...
Just make sure that they do speak clearly, because I am taking, I want to get names so you can remember. We're even a select, and just remind people when they get up to speak in the public, just make sure that they state their names so I can hear them.
Yeah, Connor did a fine job of writing down what we had discussed the other day. That schedule is perfect. I think the biggest question that is going to come up is those two service connected disability articles, and how those are going to be reconciled. What happens if they both pass? Or are you going to propose an amendment to have one contingent on the other? Do you have a plan for, are you going to deal with that?
I believe the conversation was around leaving them both there, and by moving the service connected disability credit that was advised through the board to the last position, it becomes the predominant warrant article should they both pass.
So if they both pass, only that one will...
Becomes the primary warrant that is in effect.
But people won't know that when they see the ballot, right? It doesn't specify that.
We can communicate that, that it will not be specified on the ballot that way, though.
All right, all right, so that will come up.
And an opportunity exists also at deliberative session for the folks in the room to reconcile the difference between the articles. So a Select Board member, a member of the audience, one of the petitioners for the petition article, or really anybody, at any time could introduce an amendment to either one of those articles to either match the amount as the other one, or nullify it essentially saying that, you know, look to Article Number 17 for the same topic, that decision will be held. And so, you know, I don't have a position, and I won't have a position on what happens at deliberative session, what voters decide. I do think, and Mr. St. Jean's point is, it would be confusing to voters to have two articles with two different dollar amounts pertaining to the same topic. So I think it's a good practice, I think it would be good practice at deliberative session to have that reconciled. The Select Board can lead that charge, or members of the audience can. I think the moderator and I will both be prepared to speak to the folks at deliberative session, letting them know what the implications are of any of the decisions made. Not with any stance, not with any agenda, but just simply to say, listen, here are your options. If both articles are amended to read the same exact thing, they will both still appear on the ballot. And if they, if two articles appear and the amounts are different, then the attorney and DRA's position is that the article adopted last is the one that prevails. And so we'll be in a position to communicate that to the folks in the room on Saturday, but it will be the role of the folks in the room on Saturday to make any decision about changing that. And if so, if the Select Board would like to be prepared to make any changes, you can certainly have me prepare amendments ahead of time, or it's, it would be pretty simple activity to handle during deliberative session.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, they both appear, but will the amounts, will we have time to adjust the ballots based on whatever the outcome is at deliberative?
Yes.
Okay. But they still appear no matter what's decided?
Correct.
That's, I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that all correctly.
Correct.
Okay, and looking ahead a couple weeks into the future, do you folks intend to participate in helping out for the election? On the 11th? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to put you on the spot.
But to put us on the spot, that's okay.
I think my expectation is that we'd have to stagger it.
Right. I would be able to come in during the evening, but I have meetings booked most of the day, which is typically about how it goes for my schedule. And usually I come in the, in the evening hours and stay through close.
Well, we expect it to be a busy day, and we have a couple of shortages in help, that we could use a little help on. So if you folks can make it, we can certainly use your help. We have some real, real things that you can help with, so. All right, if you can get out, or if you can recommend a couple of people that might have interest in working for the election, have them get in touch with Kim or myself, and we love to talk to them.
Yeah, I have multiple people that would be willing to sign up for that day, so.
Okay, thanks.
And I think for folks that, the Select Board contacts, or for anybody listening, this is a great opportunity to get involved in the election process as an employee. You'll have four opportunities this year to practice what you learn as an election worker, and certainly be on the list for future elections to work that, those seasonal hours. Very seasonal.
Any other questions? Nothing you would like to add? Kim Karikas? Thank you. And again, my apologies, I'm so sorry. Okay. Moving on, Transfer Station and Recycling Center Review Committee. We had five people who filled out applications to be a member of the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee. Mr. Bailey?
I'm going to accept the following individuals, Mr. Royce, Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Penali, Winter, and Amenti to the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee.
I would second that motion. Aye or aye?
Bailey, aye.
Articoff, aye?
Matt, aye. Also, the planning board had a member who has resigned from his position, and they're making a proposal to appoint Rondi Boyer, who is currently an alternate, as a full board member.
I have an objection.
I'd second that.
Oh, okay, I'll make the motion move. Mr. Boyer, too, where the planning board?
Ms.
Ms. Boyer. Sorry about that. Hope she's not taking offense.
It's a night of Freudian slips, huh?
I got my skates on.
So we have a motion and a second? Bailey, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Articoff, aye?
Matt, aye. Mr. Air?
The next one, you want to discuss it before or after the motion? I'll make the motion.
Conservation Commission?
Yep.
I know, mm. I have nothing to say one way or the other, so. Does the board request to have dialogue on that?
I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Well, as a stake guy, I have the honor to attend a meeting with this individual. And he'd be an asset to the conservation group.
Okay. So do we have a motion to...
I'll make that motion to put Mr. Smith on at the Conservation Commission.
Seconded by Mr. Air? Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Articoff, aye?
Matt, aye.
Just real quick, I want to circle back to the Transfer Station Recycling Center Review Committee. So the Select Board, if the Select Board is interested in appointing a Select Board member to participate in the committee, you could certainly do that now, or reserve that right in the future. The committee intends to mobilize as soon as possible once schedules are meshed from the recently appointed members. So we can certainly keep the board involved at that stage.
Based on when the meetings will be taking place, I'd be very happy to participate. But I think for most of us, the schedule will dictate whether we're able to.
Absolutely. So I'll share that information when it's available, and obviously, it'll be posted publicly as well, prior to meeting.
All right. Public comment? Going once?
I have a public question.
Can we step up to the...
And we might have a public answer.
Peter Royce, you're recently appointed Recycling Center and Transfer Station Review Committee Member.
I'm just curious as to how we're going to initiate getting those meetings started? Is that something Aaron is in charge of, or...
Yes.
Just now appointed, I assume? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, everything's in there.
Case Your Brown, 24 Hall Road. Two months ago, I came to the board and spoke to the board about a select person not stopping on a project that I did on Church Street. This board member, since then, has still not stopped. I talked about slander. My customer is now very frustrated with me, being how it's a Select Board member, and that the Select Board had already spoke about ending it. I want to know what the board's going to do about it, because enough's enough. We have zoning administrator that has gone through everything. We have all the permits, everything in line. So is this select person going to stop or not?
Mr. Bailey?
Mr., I am the individual for the record, please, so that notes. I have looked at that, I asked the board to do it, and my conversations that I have with people in the public are my conversations, and they had nothing to do, I haven't brought it back up again. I was questioned again tonight about it, and nothing has been said unless somebody else has brought it up during the conversations that I had with them. I had a conversation today, we were talking about something else, and during the conversation, it came up again. I have not come back to ask John, who is the, John, your title is billing official?
Zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator. I haven't said anything to Connor, and I haven't asked this board to do anything with it. I'm just having my comments on how I feel about it. And I have made comments on the gas station also. So that's, that's my freedom to do that. It's not in any way of ask any public official to move forward with any other request. I made my request, the board said no. I told the board I didn't like it, but I accept what they said, and that's been it. And I would ask you to please convey that to your customer and how it is. And I also have words with you, and I told you that I didn't like it, but I accept what the board said.
And I heard from him.
I think that, you know, I'm not always Mr. Smooth, but I have been smart enough to know that, once the decision was made, it was made. So that's, if you'd take care of that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Select Person Harkoff?
Well, I absolutely respect that all of us on this board are individuals, and that we all have certain areas of interest, expertise, knowledge-based and skill sets. I do often think it's important for us to remind ourselves that even when we are acting as individuals, in the back of most people's minds are the fact that we are actually volunteer-elected officials for the town. And so this is one of those, hey, you're both right, and I got my own problems. No, I'm just kidding. No, what I'm getting at with the two of you is, I think that George can have an opinion. I think you, as the person working there, certainly can be functioning in a professional capacity. I, I think the board has settled this, and feel very comfortable with the professional capacity that has taken place, and the oversight of the zoning admin.
Administrator.
And I think the important part of all of this is for us, you know, leadership often requires that you show constraint in different situations. And so I'll ask that each of us on this board remind ourselves in those leadership roles when we need to exercise that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it's finally done over with.
Thank you for saying it such a finer manner.
Any other public comments? All right, moving on to the review of minutes from January 6th. Does anybody have any comments on them?
Motion to accept.
Second it. Roll call vote? Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Articoff, aye?
Matt, aye.
I'll just note on those minutes for January 6th, Select Board members, department heads, folks that are in the audience tonight, a lot of folks will be asked ahead of town meetings, certainly deliberative session and voting, for details about what folks are voting on, what some of the discussion going into that was. This set of minutes is an excellent resource for that. Even better, this set of minutes, like all sets of minutes, provides links to the presentation on January 6th, the video presentation. So per by article, somebody could refer to these, this document, go to the article that was discussed, click on the link, and watch the presentation just of that discussion, just of that article. So I would urge anybody to use this document as a resource, and urge folks that have questions about what was discussed or what's to be voted on. Certainly start here, there's plenty of other resources available online, but this is a succinct version of a culmination of many months to get to the warrant we have for voters this year. Thank you.
Welcome.
Motion to approve the minutes from the January 16th meeting of 2020?
Second.
Roll call vote?
First, the only, the only adjustment, sorry, from what was sent out is it was indicated Monday, January 16th, whereas it was actually Thursday, January 16th. And that correction was made on the minutes we have for your signature. Sorry, and thank you.
I was the president.
Bailey, aye.
Articoff, aye with amendment.
Matt, aye with the amendment. All right. Staff reports.
Everything I have to discuss is an agenda item, thank you.
All right. Venus' office administrator call.
For your signature tonight, I have two payroll manifests for check date 1/23/2020, an AP summary check register for check date 1/23/2020, one land use change tax warrant for property on Mary Hill Road for $200, and one oath of office for Deputy Police Chief Daniel Brooks. That's all.
All business, the goodwill expansion project to pay self the amendment cost of $53,000... Thirty five. Thirty five dollars. So I've retained a comprehensive summary of the last number of months working on this project. This is, back in March, the Select Board signed, authorized the signature of the letter of agreement indicating that the town would cover these costs. No action was made by the Conservation Commission until January 16th to authorize that expenditure from the conservation fund specifically. The, this, whereas the Select Board does not have to authorize every penny that the Conservation Commission spends, it's important to know that this $53,000 is in conjunction with the much larger project, the $230,000 that the Select Board authorized at the last meeting. And the, so I think it's important that the Select Board consider that expenditure, consider the project as a whole. The, the $53,000 or a part of the $53,000 is still anticipated to be returned through grant revenue, but it must be spent and then reimbursed. The town has only received $10,000 of grant revenue so far. And I think it's important that the Select Board consider the, with all of the information that's available, the approving the request from the Conservation Commission to pay self $53,035 from the conservation fund to cover the amendment, Conservation Easement deed amendment costs.
So I have a couple of comments on that, and then I will, Mr. Air go. My first comment on it is, is that I feel as though this has come to us piecemeal, and has been a less than complete package. And I think I'd probably also speak for Mr. Royce in that standpoint, because I know he has raised the comment numerous times about the fact that they do not, they're not communicating well about what they need for funds, or how they're utilizing it. And I think that is consistent, and I would agree with that wholeheartedly. Also, looking at the Conservation Commission meeting minutes, the requested amount is different than the...
That's probably my fault, I apologize. I just made a note, the 53125 verse 53035. I copied from an email that I didn't look at the updated minutes, so I'll accept responsibility for that one.
So is the amount 53125 50?
I think that should be the amount that if the board acts, the board acts on.
Which is the larger of the two amounts, that way if you need less, you can go with less.
Right, and so it has changed a few times. I mean, I'm, I'm not skirting responsibilities, certainly my fault getting that number wrong. But the letter of agreement indicated the cost at $52,740. So it has been a little bit of a moving target throughout the process.
So the, the other comment I would have on this is, I would like to make, I would like to make a proposal that we, as a board, have Connor draft a letter and send it to the Conservation Commission, that they will create a checklist for any lands that they're purchasing. It will include all the required information that they would need to know upfront, deeds, deed research, title, including all necessary information that needs to be communicated to and from our accounting area, to our town treasurer, to Mr. Royce. And that they organize themselves and get themselves together, because we've had a lot of problems with money not coming out to the right amounts in the conservation fund. And if we're going to have an effective plan to make sure we don't have to go through what we did this past year with saying, you pay half, we pay half, we're going to eat this down the middle, I think that is a fair and effective way for us to approach that with them. That they need to get it together so that it is fair to everybody, because I'm not feeling like we're getting a fair shake where every time we come into a meeting, we have to amend and change this, and that we've done it at least a half a dozen times at this point. Select person, Select Person Air first, and then Select Person Harkoff.
Can everyone look at the letter on its hand and... Where you got the pamphlets? I'm not a smart person, and I'm not, so just try to be simple, but I feel no one is perfect. And things can happen, things slip through the air unrecognized. But if you go back to the third paragraph, there's a different number, 52740. And then on the last line, no obligation reimbursed by the town. So that's telling me that they're going to pay the extra $465. Right? And then you keep going down along, funding source is secured by the town, Barrington, for this project. So we were issued, when I was at the conservation, I'm trying to follow, is there any information there either? Because none of this is given up, trying to follow in my head. The 240, 230, 240, 222, what was I saying, rounded off. Now there's 53, I'm at 275. And there's other land that's donated and cost. Then you go back down here to hazardous waste. Any additional costs will be paid by the town. Who is the town? Is it us? Is it the Conservation Commission? I think I should be clarifying. And then surveying too. Any additional work will be paid by the town. So I feel this, this has really contradicted itself. And it's not very clear to me, because I'm not a lawyer, but there's just some loopholes. And then future boards, if this ever comes up, something happens there, it's the town's responsibility, is it the board now we have to sign on all these votes on the money amended and stuff? The whose decision? I don't have a problem with the conservation spending the money. I believe a check and balances, but I believe us signing the, to purchase the land. But now we're going to sign to authorize the money, okay? Authorize, but oversee the money? And if something goes wrong, I'm going to take the blame for it? Something goes wrong on this project, I'm taking the blame? I can blame enough for everything, all right? Thank you. And I understand with Peter, I thank Peter Royce, and I understand exactly where he's coming from. And Connor, you did a good job of all the write-up and stuff. But now it's coming down to us. And I'd like any explanation and detail, some, more clarity, thank you.
Select Person Harkoff?
Do we have written confirmation that the grant funds will be coming in?
There's a variety of funding sources. The primary funding, funding source is the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, a clean, clean water, drinking water, the drinking water trust fund. The paperwork that we have indicates up to, an award of up to $190,000. So I have been in contact with the woman who administers the grant, and, you know, she's indicated that as long as the paperwork's provided, it's, you know, essentially a done deal. But it still requires the signature of the governor and government. deal, but it still requires the signature of the governor and governor's executive council. So there are still steps in the process, approval steps in the process, and I think that's why the letter is purposely vague, but I share the treasurer's concern that it's important the select board makes these decisions knowing that that money isn't cash on hand, that grant money. Yes, the grant has been awarded, yes, it's very likely the town will be reimbursed these funds, but the award paperwork indicates up to $190,000. Doesn't indicate $190,000, and it doesn't guarantee $190,000. I have confidence in my conversation that the large portion of that grant will be reimbursed to the town, but again, it's, we don't have that money available.
Select person Harikov, and then select person.
So the accepted $240,000 in grants, where's the other $50,000 coming from?
So it's a aggregation of four, five or six $10,000 and smaller grants, one of which we've received. I can pull up the list if you'd be interested in the specific funding sources, but it's, okay, it's listed on that, terrific.
So I guess, back to the issue at hand, if, if the money's been promised, but it hasn't been realized yet, should we be expending the $53,000 prior to receiving the funds from the grants that will actually pay for the property itself?
It's a great question. It's the first question that I asked, and the $190,000 is a reimburse, is, is a reimbursement, so the, they don't provide the grant funds upfront, they reimburse expenditures. I don't actually know the details of the others. I know that the field ponds is the one we have, or baffling?
I believe the one we received was baffling. We haven't received field pond or quartz, which, I've got ones that don't see any besides this.
So the one we did receive once, I, you know, would assume that that grant money's available to spend, you know, not reimbursed, but the, again, the largest grant received from the drinking water trust fund, drinking water groundwater trust fund is what it's called, is a reimbursable grant.
May I interrupt myself?
Yes.
It's one of the things that, it's one of the many things that irritates me about this process, that we did.
$10,000.
If you wouldn't mind just toward the camera, thank you.
We did get $10,000 that was dedicated to this particular project. I'm trying to remember if we got another $10,000, but it didn't, or maybe the paperwork said it was coming and we haven't got it yet, but it didn't stipulate that it was for this project. So the only thing we really received is $10,000 clearly dedicated to this project. The rest is all going to come out of the conservation fund, and that's why I was bringing up the topic at our last meeting, and this is really going to bring the fund down to, like, $10,000 by the time we get done, so I hope they don't have another project right away.
Right. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. As the chair has noted in one of our meetings, when we talked about the amendment language that came with us for us to approve, was to, thus there is a very slight chance that this amended and reserved easement may require an amendment for future costs that's there. Now, once I started to read that again today, I went through and I looked up RSA 3682, which is for the Conservation Commission, and part of the notations on here is the reason why we have the conservation is for the proper utilization and protection of the natural resources and for the protection of watershed resources of said city, and they make, in essence, it comes under their responsibility to make sure this is done. So that's to answer part of the question put in by Mr. Air as to who is responsible, is it the town or is it the conservation fund? I'm not a lawyer, but I can read that, it tells me it's right there. Also, under 3684, under one, it talks about approval of local governing body, that's us, but the governing body we look at is the voters, which we'll take care of on the 11th, and it goes into depth saying that they need to present all of their projects and what have you to them unless we have the funding that we, the town has voted to allow the board of selectmen to buy and do their leases. Also, in essence, I've got enough information here that shows that the town should not be responsible, we need to have the Conservation Commission join, and if we go back to 1999, and I must say that when we had the vote there, Peter made a comment on there that he was afraid that, because the language wasn't so specific then, that we would have trouble making the payments and purchasing property and/or whatever needs were necessary for, and also on there is that there's a part in the thing that the request must be made to the treasurer, so, so that the treasurer will have the proper information necessary to cut the check. That was from the 1999 town report on December 31st, and that article didn't pass. So in essence, I think that we have shown how we, the town board of selectmen, can ask and work with the commission to pay the bills that they have as stated for the simple reason to the utilization and protection of all natural resources. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So though, I was going to save it for select person reports, but I will comment on it now, is that there was a resident who reached out with a concern about the plowing of town lands as well as accommodation of self-remained lands, and the response from Selt on it was that they, they plow as funds allow them to, and that's, that's as firm as they get on, on it, and their comment on it was that they, they have volunteers who plow it and they do it at their leisure, and only if it's a storm greater than three I sent back a note on it, just because the gentleman was concerned about the fact that it was plowed, the land was plowed in prior years or last year, but was not being plowed this year. I reinforced the fact that the select board did institute a policy where they have to request a quote and a price to have the town maintain that as conservation, that as the Conservation Commission would be responsible for that, and that we supported that, and part of why we were doing it was for exactly the reason that we were trying not to overtax our highway department with something that they didn't have capacity to take on.
Select person Air.
Well, since you jump, I'll jump too. During the conservation meeting, I made them all aware that that letter was handed out to all of us, we're well aware of it, and I told them it wasn't a road agent's decision, it was the select board's back in February, I believe, last year we made it, so, they, he did get confused about different properties, up being plowed, not being plowed, and the Southie Land Trust, that he thought was goodwill, ladies referring to the other one on the street, but I, I made it clear that town administrator handed out that letter to all of us, we all knew about it.
Select person Harikov.
So it appears in the annual report for Selt that they ended 2018 with about $5 million in their funds. Is there a reason we need to act on this $53,000 before all of the grant funding is finalized?
So the, there was conversation, once it was realized that the Conservation Commission had an act to authorize it prior to closing, and I believe a member of the Conservation Commission asked Selt if it would be possible to close and finalize the funds afterwards, and I believe the response, Peter might have been on the email, I can look it up, but I believe the response was, we prefer to have the money available at closing. So I think maybe it was an option, but they were willing to wait for authorization from the Conservation Commission, select board, in order, delay closing to finalize the funds and move forward that way. So I, I don't think it was asked as a, it isn't an option unless grant money is available, but I think it was asked as a, can we close and finalize the approval afterwards, and they preferred not to.
Select person Air.
I believe paragraph four addresses that, and funds and sources be secured by the town of Barrington for this project.
So I would raise my concern to voting to approve this right now. I'm looking at documents that have three amounts on it, that do not total anything that is the same, and in the essence of transparency and doing things appropriately, I feel our treasurer needs to have all the necessary information and a plan as to how and when he thinks things will be paid and/or reimbursed, and we need documents that accurately reflect all of the prices across the board, whether it's a Selt document, a Conservation Commission document, a town administrator report, I don't think it matters who it is, I would like to see that we have one accurate number that reflects what this is.
So as it stands right now, it appears that we have authorized $52,740.
Right.
I'll read the last line, but all of that.
Well, that was the maximum amount that we had authorized without written permission to expend any additional funds.
And I think the important part of the lengthy discussion the board's having now, which I think is really valuable, is when the select board made the decision to sign the letter of agreement back in May, the understanding was that the grant money was going to cover the expenses and it wasn't going to be an expense to the town. What's different from then to now is that the select, the Conservation Fund will be prepaying all of these funds and securing the grant money as a reimbursement after the fact, and I share the treasurer's opinion that it's important that these decisions are made with all of the accurate information, all the information that's available, and so I think when the select board made that decision in May, I don't think it was clear at the time that the money wasn't, the grant money wasn't going to be paying this, that the Conservation Fund was going to be paying it, and the town, or the Conservation Fund was going to be reimbursed. So I think it's important that the select board consider that, knowing it, just like with the expenditure of $230,000, the select board authorized the acquisition of the property knowing that the grant money was in place. The select board, the first time the select board authorized the acquisition of the additional Haley property, it wasn't clear that the town was going to have to prepay $222,000 to acquire that property and then have it reimbursed. So having the select board make that decision again on the 6th, knowing full well that this is a prepayment with money, and then obviously after that happened, the request for the $53,000 check came, which prompted the Conservation Commission to hold a special meeting in order to authorize the funds and bring the request to the select board at tonight's meeting. So I, it's, I think it's very important that the select board, again, you know, my role is to bring you the best information that exists at the time, and this is the best information that exists at the time, which is certainly, I think, different information than was available in May when the select board signed the letter of agreement with Selt indicating the $52,000 number, 52,740.
Select person Harikov.
Does this leave us with very little funds to deal with the dam issue?
Again, I think, yeah, I think it's important, I think it's important to reiterate that I have confidence in talking to the folks from the drinking water groundwater trust fund, I have a high level of confidence that that grant money is going to be reimbursed. I don't have a high level of confidence that it's going to be easy putting all the paperwork together, given how hard it's been to put the paperwork together so far, but I have a high level of confidence that money's coming in, that's my personal interactions with the folks administering the grant. So I'm not necessarily, I'm not specifically concerned that this money, this grant money isn't going to come in or be reimbursed, but again, the risk is always going to be there. If something happens at the state level and there's a spending freeze, or the executive council or the governor, you know, stop spending from this grant pool for some reason or another, the, the risk exists, albeit I think small. As far as the impact of the Conservation Fund, yes, the Conservation Fund has about $325,000 in it.
That was before the $20,000 that you authorized?
Okay, so there's going to be about 15,000.
Belleville?
Belleville Conservation.
So I think it'll be down around $10,000 by the time these two items are. Select person Air.
I believe, last time I saw the figures, was 302,000, plus the 10, but there may be the other 10 involved as well.
No, the 10 is part of that, right.
Right, but we had 302, we had 312, at one time we had 302, $302,000, like a month and a half ago, so now the other 10, so, that's why I'm at this meeting, get very confused in the understanding, when they voted on this, I had no information in front of me to look at, they didn't, they didn't share any information, so I'm going 240 plus 50s or 275, 280, 290, there's 307,000, it's all adding up too fast for me, and that's why they, I, that's what I'm saying. I believe, my personal eye, that no one's perfect, and I can see this 475, this stuff slipping through the cracks, and it added up in the past, and I'm afraid it's going to happen again, and then we, waiting on the state for their reimbursement, it's only a minimum 45 days, but there are three big, three, three or four properties coming up this year that have current use, that's going to go into the, their fund, their fund's going to grow, grow up pretty good this year, that there will be money, that we're not going to drain it dry, there might be a lull while this comes to the rule.
My only concern with that is we're going to have expenses that come up in the meantime that we have to take action on, and if, you know, essentially they're going to run their fund into the negative until it's replenished, and I think it's important that wherever it is, they're held accountable to manage that money appropriately. It brings me back to the all boards meeting, where there was an individual who said, if there's money in the check, checking account, I spend it, and that is not the way in which I live my life. As a select board member, I take real exception to, to that.
So I think the select board has a tough decision to make. I think the select board clearly already authorized the expenditures of the $52,740. I think similar to the select board making the decision at the January 6th meeting to authorize the expenditure of 230, knowing that the money would likely come back in through the grant reimbursement, I think the select board is asked to consider the $53,125,50 the same way. I, I definitely think it's important to get a joint meeting set up with the Conservation Commission, select board, and set that parameter, I'm happy to draft a letter as the chair suggested, and clear up the process moving forward. I think the, like I said, I think the select board's in a tough position here, having already authors authorized the majority of the expenditure, but I think it's certainly a necessary step to receive additional authorization if the board's willing, and develop a plan moving forward to avoid last minute considerations and piecemeal delivery, as the chair has indicated.
I can tell you, my position is, we move forward with the 52,740, they can fund it, and when we get reimbursed, we'll, we can then reimburse them for the $400 and change, if that's really what they want to do.
385,50.
380, if they want to hold it up over 385,50, all the more power to them. Mr. Bailey, you have a?
Yeah, I just, I, Mr. Chairman, I agree with what you're saying 100%, that's why I went through great lengths to have help in calling up the other three meetings for the Conservation Commission that was held over the side, and also to look the RSAs, and I'm going to, I'm going to say that we went to 75% of that money to go to pay for exactly what it says states in the RSAs for the Conservation Fund, and, you know, we have another project coming up that we're still discussing with them. That project has to do with water and cement, you know, we're, we're talking about that, I mean, I don't like turn around and, I, I, one, do not spend money that's, that's not there, or I don't spend it till it's gone to zero, and waiting for the. or I don't spend it till it's gone to zero and waiting for the new money to come out in, in July 1st, so to speak, when you talk about other things. But I have, you know, we approved this money and I think we should just stay with that and do that. I'm not making any motion or anything else. I'm just involved in the discussion. So it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's in black and white. It should come out of their fund. But we have to help them. So, thank you.
Other, select person Hartokov? Can you select person ask?
So it appears in this letter of understanding that as they've itemized all of these fees that will be a part of this and as we authorized 52,740 that we did sign and indicate that within 30 days of receiving this invoice, we would pay it. Did we receive an invoice?
No.
I would like to table this until such invoice has been sent.
I would say that I did not receive an invoice. That did not come over with their request to me.
Would that be?
Does that need a second, Mr. Chairman? I'll give you a second.
Yep.
Go from there.
I would appreciate that because I'm looking at the back of this. This is total budget, but it does not say that there's an invoice here.
So funding and reimbursements, the town shall reimburse SALT within 30 days of the town's receipt of invoices submitted by SALT or at the closing of the conservation easement amendment, whichever is earlier. Did we close?
No, that's what they're trying to schedule. So they're trying to schedule the closing.
Yeah. So I would say if a detailed invoice could be supplied for the funds.
Detail being key in that.
Well, I'm just going through these numbers, 24.
They didn't add up for you?
That is correct. Sorry.
Just want to make sure I got somebody else.
I think an itemized invoice would be helpful.
I agree.
And we could move on that within 30 days of the receipt of that.
True.
And that would be us doing our due diligence and still following through on what we promised in the letter of understanding dated for May.
Or is that a consensus that there was a?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know.
Or we don't vote with that at first or the second?
I'd like to move the motion.
I would second.
Before action, the, the document that exists, which I don't necessarily think will satisfy the board's request for a detailed invoice, is the HUD form, the standardized HUD form for closing, indicating the money to be paid to SALT. And I just wanted to pull up the level of detail. Just settlement charges and then payment to SALT for goodwill panish project costs. So I just want the board to be clear that that document exists. That's the HUD form that you would sign at a closing. That's, you know, not a detailed invoice.
That's the 52?
It's 52 plus the 2,000 for, oh, sorry. Bear with me. I apologize. So settlement charges to seller is $2,090.50 and then the payment to SALT for goodwill panish project costs is $51,035. So that's where the 53,125,50 comes from.
And even right in our agreement though, we said 52,740. The town shall not exceed the maximal, maximal authorization of 52,740. Should SALT exceed the total estimated expenses, without such written permission from the town, SALT shall do so at its own risk and expense with no obligation of reimbursement by the town.
So in an email chain, there's a, you will note that the HUD includes $51,035, which covered costs agreed upon in our letter. These costs are broken down as follows, repeating the same costs. But this is, I mean, this is a bulleted email. 16 for phase one, 85 for project management, 225 for travel.
So in the detailed letter of understanding, the total amounts, if my math is correct, 47,765 was detailed. The board approved up to 52,740. Still neither of these match the amount that's been requested of the 53. And again, due diligence and our fiduciary responsibility would lead me to say that a detailed invoice explaining where the variance has taken place would be important.
Detailed variant, or a detailed invoice as indicated in the letter of understanding?
Right.
Okay.
With variance though, because it's more than what has been approved and certainly more than each of the outlined areas.
Perfect.
Mr. Bailey, would you just like to amend your motion to include the detailed invoice with variance?
So I would do that, Mr. Chairman.
I will second that amendment. A little call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Article five?
Naff five. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, the compensation study results and implementation, which I will let Connor elaborate on, even though two of us are members of that committee.
Right, so provided a summary in my report, which I won't go into in great detail here, just explaining how the select board happened upon pursuing a compensation study to keep up with the labor market in our, for our staff. The report is included linked in my report. I also brought bound copies for all select board members and again, available electronically attached to my report. The headline of the compensation study was that generally wages were a little bit low and a couple portions of benefits were generous when compared to the labor market. For wages, the classification for employees based on interviews, questionnaires, or review of job descriptions was proposed. That classification is appendix B. Also in conjunction with that classification is a pay plan that's appendix C. It maintains 13 steps and assigns a wage range for each grade, each classification of employee. The wages for the 2020, the impact of the 2020 budget to implement the recommendations as proposed would be $38,000, $32,500 in wages and $5,500 in benefits. That's the wage impact. For benefits, one area they identified was the contribution the town makes towards the flexible spending accounts. So many communities make flexible spending accounts available to their staff to put in pre-tax dollars for approved expenses. The town prior to offering dental insurance funded those accounts with $400 a year. Since that time, the town has instituted a 50% premium payment for just employees, not their covered dependents or spouses, but a 50% payment of dental insurance. So to be consistent with the labor market studied in this compensation study, the removal of the $400 FSA contribution would have a budget impact of approximately $12,000. The other benefit identified as generous in the compensation study was earned time. So primarily on the accrual side. So what the market data showed is that our, in the categories we had, we generally, the employees in the town of Barrington generally accrued five extra vacation days than the, the labor market. And so in order to correct for that, the proposal is to create a new category for earnings, for accrual. So zero to five years would be 17 days, where it was 22 before. The labor market is 16 days. Six to 10 would be 22 days. It was 27. The labor market is 21. 11 to 15 years of service would be 27 days. It was previously 32 and the labor market is 26. And then for 16 plus years of service, it would be 32 days and the labor market is 28 days. And so that proposal is set to affect only employees hired after April 6th of 2020. So all employees maintain their current accrual rate for earned time and would move to the next category within the new parameters. And so that would recognize that the folks that are here now wouldn't go backwards on their accrual, but would recognize that in order to move forward with the labor market and correct ourselves with where the labor market is, those adjustments would be made. Additionally, for earned time buyout, the earned time buyout benefit in Barrington was slightly generous as compared to the labor market. The proposal would be to adjust for group one employees to allow tiered buyout options. So for zero to five years of service, they could buy out 10% of the earned time they would accrue in a year. Six to 10 years would be 30% and 11 plus years would be 60%. Group two employees, which is police and fire and salary exempt employees, would be 60%. And so those changes would go into effect April 6th, 2020 and would apply to all employees. And so earned time buyout, as you know, going through the budget process, is always a difficult budget line for department heads to budget for. I discussed at length with the compensation study task force the calculation used to estimate what kind of an impact that would have, a budgetary impact. I estimated a reduction of about 25% of earned time buyout, which would be about $15,000. Again, you know, we won't know until the changes are made and we see how utilization changes. And quite frankly, we only budget for about, I think it was 18 or 19% of our actual earned time buyout liability. So, you know, any given year, the, if usage changed and, and buyout practices change, you know, our earned time buyout liability could be higher. So it's a conservative estimate based on three, studying the last three years of earned time utilization. But anyways, so 2020 budget impact, the net impact of the 38,000 in wages and benefits less the 12,000 in the FSA, the $400 FSA contribution and the estimated 15,000 in earned time buyout reduction is a net of 11,000. It's important to note that there will be an additional wage impact of approximately 10,000 in 2021. These wages will just be for the 75% of the year from April moving forward. So the compensation study task force has reviewed everything. Unanimously recommends adopting the compensation study methodology and recommendations as presented. And if the select board supports moving forward with the recommendation, the, the reports will be prepared for employees indicating the changes on an employee by employee basis prior to the implementation on April 6th. It's important to also note that the New England Police Benevolent Association, the union members and the police department are under contract through March of 2021 and the proposed adjustments will not be affecting that existing labor contract because any mid-contract adjustments between the town and the union would require mutual agreement. So the select board is asked to consider adopting the compensation study methodology and recommendations as presented.
Questions from the board?
Has anybody lost any money?
No.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you for bringing your time into this.
Nice. Thanks.
Motion to accept the changes to wages and benefits as outlined in the municipal resources compensation and benefits study report and as approved by the compensation task force.
I'll second it. Okay, a little call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Article five?
Naff five.
On behalf of department heads and certainly staff, I really want to thank the select board for committing to this process earlier in 2019, seeing the process through, certainly the compensation study task force, for putting the time and effort in to understanding the details of the results and options moving forward. I think it's important that this board, as the one indicating that a compensation study was important to move forward with reviewing that information, is able to make the decision on implementing it. Future boards will have the tough consideration on continuing the path, continuing from the foundation developed by this compensation study, which at some point in the future, five years or so, might include an additional wage study, study of wages, the labor market. But also, you know, taking steps to avoid ending up in the, in the position we were before, not necessarily with wages being behind, but by not pursuing the, the necessary practices where folks are topping out in a grade that doesn't match the labor market and things like that. So I certainly credit and thanks to the current board and indication to future boards that this information, this was a thoughtful process and there's a lot of good information contained in the report and available to the town moving forward.
I would just like to echo what Connor's saying, just from the standpoint that we've spent a lot of time this year looking at this and trying to make sure that we are fairly and justly compensating people in this town. We adjusted several salaries to bring them in range where they should be and make sure that we weren't taking advantage of the great service that they've provided us and that we recognize that and recognize all the work that the people in this town do by taking on such a task and a compliment of having a full compensation study done. Thank you.
I'm happy to note that we now have what is an appropriate internal equity and that we are externally market competitive now and that we have all of the data analysis in front of us to know that over the next five years, we can have a plan going forward to continue looking at ranges until another study is completed.
Select person Bailey?
I would like to ask once we finish this topic, if we could go back to the first one.
To the?
I don't want to move on to new business.
Okay. I believe we're done with that. Does anyone have anything else? So you would like to circle back to the goodwill expansion project?
Yes, in, in, during the discussions, it was probably that we're going to send a letter to the commission. And I would just like also at that time, that maybe with your approval, that we could consider the MOU at the same time. I think it would be a good time to put everything all together and to have a discussion on that. If that's what you would do.
You, yeah. I would encourage that too, but we have new, in March after the election, the new board members.
Right.
Be probably better at that time.
Well, yeah, by the time the letter gets there, we set up a meeting. It probably will be March or April by the time.
Oh, no, they won't close on the 6th.
And so I've been in conversation with the current conservation commission chair to schedule that joint meeting, review the MOU and other things. And, and we agreed, as Dan indicated, that the best time to do that would be after the March election. Right now I have it tentatively scheduled for that first meeting after the election. I, I wouldn't be surprised if that was the first thing to go on the chopping block because that's typically a busy meeting with a couple of new members potentially and reviewing the structure of the board and instructions and things like that. So that's, right now the tentative date is the second meeting in March, but we can review that as it gets closer.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we not do it the first meeting? Just because the first meeting really needs to be an onboarding for new members and we, as of right now, I believe are pretty confident there will at least be one new board member present.
Reminder to anybody at home, the signup period for select board members, library trustees, cemetery trustees, Rick's looking for some competition at the ballot box this year, is open until Friday, January 31st. The town clerk's office will be open from 3:00 to 5:00 on the 31st to accept signups for the last day.
Select person Hartokov?
Do we know what we pay people to work at the polls?
What you do? If you give me just a second, I can tell you exactly. $10.
$10 an hour from 11-hour day?
Tax free.
Tax free.
Woo-hoo!
Let me write that down. We need people.
Is that go first? Do we get that?
All right, take that up with the town clerk. It's her budget.
All right, moving on to new business. Recreation building addition, Connor, I'll let you.
Okay, so this really isn't a consequential, not looking for a consequential decision from the select board tonight. I wanted to let the select board know that the recreation commission has been taking very seriously the space constraints that they have. The primary option available to them, which isn't in my report, but the primary option available to them is to take over the space in the library, should the library pass this March. At the same time, they know that that will likely be delayed because the library project won't be finished and then they'll have to renovate that space. So that's still their primary goal, is to take over that space and use that for the space constraint that they have. At the same time, they want to be prepared and explore options should the library project not pass or they have other items that they need to pursue sooner. So the alternative option that they're considering right now is in addition to the recreation building. Out the front of the building from the gym, I indicated the size is 65 feet by 24 feet approximately to include space for office storage, a welcome desk for the administrative assistant, workspaces for seasonal staff and site supervisors, and three offices for the director, assistant director and program coordinator. And so it's the select board's building. The select board have, would have absolute final say and involvement throughout the whole process. But before they went down the road of considering this option further, they wanted to know, one, if the select board was comfortable with them moving forward and considering this as an option, and two, as an option, and two, what questions would the Select Board members have, should the topic come up again, that they can have answers prepared for at a future conversation. And the final thing that I'll add is the plan is to have a request for qualifications for design-build services ready to go prior to the March vote, so that after the March vote, a request for qualifications could go out, one, for design-build services to renovate the library space, or two, for design-build services to add on to the recreation building, based on how the vote goes in March. And so the Select Board would certainly be involved in that process. But that's the plan, looking for the Select Board's blessing to continue down this road, and any questions Select Board members might want answers to prior to advertising building addition RFQ.
So I had a bunch of questions for Connor leading up to it, just to force some clarity, which he had provided, not only to me, but I hopefully to the board based on what we had drafted. But looking at that, I'm assuming they will set a parameter on their design build and depending on what their cost per square foot's going to be, and if, looking at it, it's going to be, my estimate would be anywhere, if it's the addition between a hundred bucks a square foot and 200 bucks a square foot, which would give them about a $312,000 budget. And if they're looking at a renovation, I'm assuming they're going to want to keep it closer to 100 bucks a square foot, which is about a $300,000 renovations as well, or they're going to get substantially more into that. But anyway, those are, that was my comment based on what they were looking.
Select person, Harkov.
So in sitting through the last Recreation Commission meeting, this build-out that would take place in the front of the town gym, basically where you see the first grouping of parking spaces, they were, prior to an RFQ being completed, they had been given the names of a couple of fire engineers, and they wanted to see if adding on the additional space will trigger having to sprinkle the entire building, which would add a significant increase in the cost of this idea. They were also going to conduct a space needs assessment before going forward with asking for the fire engineer to evaluate the space, and I'm not sure if they've completed that yet. But ultimately, what the Rec Commission and the staff identified was that as you come into the building, you have to cross the entire gym to get to any type of office space, and that ultimately, operationally, regardless of whether they renovate the current library into program use space, that having that addition out front of the area, operationally where people will enter the building, just made significantly more sense than even trying to move offices into the old library area. So, you know, what it really came down to is regardless of the vote, this would be a very good opportunity for the Recreation Commission to utilize the funds that they do have and build out the town gym office and, you know, greeting space. And I thought it was a project that could easily be supported by us.
Select person, Airee.
I support it. I have some different thoughts and opinions on things, but I would wait for their feedback, what their needs are first, before I would see my feelings on it. And it's all positive and stuff, what they're going about and stuff, and it will benefit the building, and it would really go. And then maybe work on the outside, clean up the outside, maybe spend some money and deal with some drainage problems there, and then get rid of some extra fill if it passes with the DES. So there's a more of a ball field out there, so that it's not as crowded. Thank you.
Any other comments? How would the, is there a motion? You're making the motion?
Oh, we do a consensus, they can go ahead and consensus the board, we all support it.
I'm comfortable with that. The questions I'll share is the RFQ, whether it's a renovation or an addition, setting a per-square-foot cost or guidance to understand the budget upfront, prior to pursuing the fire protection engineer, perform a space needs analysis, then pursue the services of fire protection engineer. So I'll make sure that those questions are answered before it comes up to the Select Board again, and certainly if other questions come up, you can let me know between now and when the board should consider it again, and I can pass those questions along. I know the Rec Commission meeting is meeting tonight, that's one thing that they're going to talk about and continue their progress towards.
The only other comment I would have on it is if and when they decide to move forward with it, if there's some specific inputs we could provide as to some of the building design with how water and snow shed off of it and things of that nature.
Definitely. One of the things that Select Person Airee mentioned to me earlier this week is that the front of that building isn't very energy efficient, and so in addition to the front of that building would certainly increase the insulation of the gym area from what it is there. And so some of those considerations, it might be an opportunity to make some decisions at the same time if an addition was done there to improve the building's longevity, those same types of things. So absolutely, the Select Board would be involved every step of the process should it go that way.
Also, on to new business, the Madbury Cooperative Services Committee, which Connor sent the information to all of us, as well as the Foster's article, or sent us the letter from Madbury, general conversation around it. How does the board feel about the idea of a cooperative services extension? And also, is that a meeting that folks would be interested in, or a process that folks would be more involved, be interested in being more involved in?
Select person, Harkov.
So I think, like with many healthcare organizations, like-size organizations are joining together so they can streamline processes, you know, have one materials department, have one HR department, therefore reducing costs. The only thing I would caution us on is that as far as Madbury goes, I'm not quite sure if they're a like-size town. And so my guess is that the town of Barrington has significantly more potential resources at its disposal than the town of Madbury may, and I wouldn't want to disappoint them if in fact we discover through the process that it is not as beneficial for the town of Barrington. So I think we could potentially have Madbury Cooperative Service Committee outline the areas they are considering cooperation with, and then it would better allow us to decide whether to dip our toe in the lake, so to speak.
And I think that was the purpose of the letter, to let the surrounding communities know that they were working on that and to expect more information forthcoming. Certainly, it was an invitation that if there was anything that communities wanted to share, they'd be more than welcome to hear that. I do expect that we'll hear more from them. And like I said, I had read the Foster's article I'd linked, I think was from the fall of last year. So I remember reading that they had formed this and surprised to see the letter. So I want to make sure that the board was aware. I'll certainly continue to keep the board posted as other information comes in. But if you are contacted by anybody that is happening, and if there's any thoughts or information you'd like to share, I'd be happy to.
Select person, Airee.
And Madbury's connected the Oyster of a school district. That scares me.
Okay. Noted.
Make sure that's in the minutes.
Good to talk. All right. Anything else on this topic, or are we ready to move along? Moving along, select person's report, select person, Airee.
Well, I'm lucky, most of mine is already done. But the Town Lands Committee has met since, and they spent a lot of time going over the forest plan, and they're doing their due diligence and investigating all the vacant lots for taxes, tax deeds properties, so they will physically walk them in and come up with a recommendation for the bullet.
Terrific. Yep. Is that all?
I had the conservation mostly earlier.
Yep. Select person, Airee.
Thank you. The library items I have, they have the foundations, library foundations having a meeting on the 11th, February 11th at 6:00 PM at the library, will be held there. Then on the 20th, there's a candidate former that they're sponsoring, supporting, and that will be at the Barrington Middle School at 7:00 PM. On March 21st, the Books in Bloom will be having their auction, and right now, it's going to be at the Barrington Public Library. If you remember, last year, they really had a tremendous one, and if the board wants to consider putting in an arrangement for that, they'd be more than willing to accept it and to go from there. The other item I have is that, on this candidate forum, Books in Bloom, April 21st is Library Workers' Day, and that's the extent of my report.
Select person, Harkov.
The Rec Commission met on January 13th. Besides the discussion of the expansion at the front of the building for both office space and operational entry space, they discussed the new lottery system for the before-and-after school program and how that will be put into effect this year in order to make the childcare that happens for the town residents more fair. People will sign up, and then the lottery system is actually through the Vermont Computer Systems, they've tested it, and people will find out for next year in February if in fact their family members are going to be covered by that program. They went over discussion of the revolving fund for the Rec Department and began to have discussions about potentially utilizing an external facilitator to be able to come up with the final dates that are needed for their strategic plan. And a new administrative assistant was hired.
Erin O'Day, she started today.
Excellent.
She'll be in the office from 8:00 to 1:30 through the non-summer hours, and folks should look forward to seeing her around.
All right. The Planning Board met on January 21st, and they did a review of the request for applicant with RRB5, which is tied to the property that connects with TurboCam. I was not present at the meeting since that was the only agenda item there, and it would be a conflict of interest for me to be there. So that was everything from the Planning Board meeting. And that is all I have.
Request for non-public for personal reputation and legal after the end of the agenda for the last public comment.
Yep. Final public comment? Mr. Royce.
Just wanted to say, I very much appreciate all the discussion about the Conservation Commission, and I wanted to give you the heads up that I'm meeting with Ken Grossman, who is currently the chair, on Wednesday morning. And certainly, if any of you have any issues you'd like to bring up in that meeting, I think you all have my email address, feel free to contact me. My big thing, I think, will very much mirror what Chairperson Nap said, looking for more timely communication. When they have a meeting and vote to do something that involves money, I don't see why we can't be immediately notified of that fact. It doesn't seem like it has to be a surprise months down the road. And I just think if we have a better communication between, well, actually among all the groups involved, things would go a lot more smoothly. Again, there's, George was planning out some of the RSAs and things, by rights, they can expend from the Conservation Fund, but the Memorandum of Understanding, Memorandum of Agreement, I think it's actually called, stipulates that they would report expenditures on a quarterly basis. I think it should be every time, because these things fall into cracks, as we all know. So that's going to be really the focus of my discussion with Ken. I'm optimistic that he's going to be agreeable to much of this, and I certainly will forewarn him that all of this will change as the Select Board gets together after the town meeting.
I would just like to, on behalf of the, as a department head and the employees in town, like to thank the board for supporting the efforts of the Compensation Study. That was a significant expense to the town, even for you folks to consider doing it. I've looked briefly over the study. I think that it's going to be a win-win for all employees and the town, especially there's some things in there that'll help the longer-term employees, the people who top out. And while there certainly is, like in anything, a little bit of give and take, I think at the end of the day, I think the Compensation Study, in my humble opinion, is going to work for all the employees in the long run. And certainly, on behalf of my own department, the one big thing for the fire, the fire and rescue side of this is that, which is important to the health of the department, is that we're going to be competitive with the people, with the departments, that we don't want to lose our people to. You know, if somebody's going to leave Barrington to go to a bigger community of Rochester, Dover, it's not about money. But when somebody is going to leave Barrington to go to another community that's going to have the exact same schedule and same type of number of call volume and these type of things, because we're not being competitive pay-wise, that's a problem, because you folks know that it costs us money to train somebody and get them up to speed in any department. So again, on behalf of my people, and generally, I thank you for making the study, paying the money to do the study, and certainly thank you for supporting it. And I hope for the benefit of the town as a whole that the future boards will look at this and continue to follow the requests of the study. Thank you.
Select person, Harkov.
So I'm hoping that the Select Board will agree to submit a Book in Bloom for the library group, and I happen to identify one vote, two vote, as a book that we might be able to utilize to do a Book in Bloom display. I will share with you all that I am not talented or gifted in anything creative or crafty, but I happen to come from a family that owned a florist shop, so I think I can tap into some resources for us to get this done.
One thing I forgot to mention is they're going to have two groups this year. They're going to have a group of professionals, and then they're going to have the ones for the amateurs. The two groups they're going to have this year.
Let's be amateurs.
As I say, it's going to be tough for us to compete in that professionals group, but I think we got it.
Yeah. So with the rest of the board's blessing, I will pull together ordering the book and making sure we have an arrangement there.
I would support that. Does everyone support that?
I will support that.
Thank you. I would like to say something as a resident of the town, and I would just like to comment. I've been here on this board now for four years, and I'd like to thank the board for all the hard work it's done. We have faced a lot of headway in the last few years, and I won't say any of it's been easy, and I appreciate all the work that everyone's done, and I appreciate the department heads for everything that you've done to support us and make us. heads for everything that you've done to support us and make us look good sitting here, because it's not easy to do most of the time, so thank you to everyone in the town and Connor for everything you're doing in the office, and the board for all the work that you're doing, and I recognize it, I appreciate it, and I like, I like seeing it, especially when we can talk about our tax rate going down and the values of property going up, because I would much rather have people's homes be worth more than paying, just paying more in taxes without the value tied to it. So thank you for everything that everyone is doing around here. Please let your people know that we appreciate all the work that they're doing for us in the town. So thank you.
Motion going on public?
Second it.
For personnel reputation.
Aye or aye?
Bailey, aye.
Article five.
Napa.
You second it?
I second it.